We are set up to welcome you in two phases. We'll be here, sitting together for a while, and then we'll divide up into small groups. And as time goes on, we'll give you a feeling for how this whole thing's going to work out. So just in case, my name is Dave Barrington. I am the co-chair of the Jericho Town Meeting Reimagined Task Force. And Gaye Symington is my co-chair. She's here over in the corner. And you are surrounded by members of the task force. It's been a great group to work with for us in this manner. This meeting is -- the words I got to to capture it, it's a meeting called by citizens for citizens. And we invited the Select Board to come and say a little something. So it's important to understand that what we're doing here is gathering the sense of the people who come to share with the Select Boards. That's the main thing we're up to. To begin with this, I'd like to, first of all, get the next slide. Just remind you of what we've done to ourselves as citizens. Couple of years ago, by petition, the citizens voted to change the way we vote on the town budget so that the final vote would be by Australian ballot. And in that meeting, there was a strong feeling that there should be a process by which the citizens are involved in the development of that -- of that -- of two things. One was the budget, and the other was any what are called public questions, which translated, as you'll hear more about later, is often called a petition. The kickoff meeting, which we have now here, this is our second one, is the first step in the process. And it is an information gathering meeting where a group of people gather together from the town and share ideas for both what's going on with the budget and what might be developed as major action items that would appear as public questions on the ballot. And there are a couple of key things that have changed in the year that's gone by. And I'll just mention one of them. And that is, it became very clear at the second meeting, which is the one numbered two in this, the Draft Budget Review Meeting, the last January meeting, it became very clear that it was sort of awkward to have large budget items appear on the floor of the meeting without anybody having any idea that that was going to happen. So the way we've adjusted the process is to really emphasize the idea that let's start those big ideas here in this kickoff meeting and grow them to the point where they've been matured and they are expected once we get to the January meeting. Or they appear on the ballot as a voted item. So I think I've -- the next thing it says on here is talk about the goals of this meeting. I think I've pretty much nailed that for you already. This meeting today is actually divided into two pieces, sort of a general group conversation, which is I'm introducing now, and then the small group discussions. And we'll get to that in a minute. But part of this meeting is to provide you a little bit of education, but a lot less than last time. We ended up thinking that we took too much time talking as a large group and didn't have enough time as small groups. So we're going to try to get through a general portion as expediently as possible this morning. So you, as citizens, get a chance to participate in -- at two phases in the meeting. There'll be a point towards the end of our general meeting where I'll just open up the floor and say, okay, now, we want to hear from you folks about your reaction and your ideas for going forward. And at that point, if there are petitions underway or major ideas that seem important to bring up, I'll invite you to take just a couple of minutes to share those with us. And then the other part of the meeting is the gathering of ideas for budget and for directions for the town. And that's the job of the small group meetings. And we'll take an hour for those. And then towards the end of the meeting, the group leaders will come back and share with us what the key points were that came out of those meetings. So all of us will have a sense leaving the meeting of what's up. The meeting is being recorded, and that's largely because there's going to be so much information that comes out of just the conversations we're going to hear that there's no way for us to remember everything. So with apologies if that seems a little bit awkward, we are making a recording. Finally, I want to thank MMU Citizen TV. They are taking -- did I get that right?
Mount Mansfield Community TV.
Oh, I didn't. Thank you. Mount Mansfield Community TV. We have -- thanks to them, a complete video set up to share what you're seeing and also to project it out to community members who are joining us online. And in particular, I wanted to thank Ben, the total hot shot, who is right now at the camera, who is just a real key pin in making this whole operation work. But I will also mention Angelique, who single-handedly put the whole rig together to get it here.
Here he is.
If you're wondering where the food came from, mostly from the task force members, but we have other contributions, so that's great. Am I forgetting anything to thank you wise? All right. Okay, so I've got -- we've got a couple of things. But the first thing I want to do was to ask Eric Johnson to take over from me. And tell us a little bit about the Select Board's perspective on where we are in the process.
This working? You can hear? All right, cool. I don't have the oratory skills of our moderator, so I do appreciate Dave and his ability to articulate the whole point of this. I want to start out as thanking the TMRI task force as well, trying to navigate through this, you know, weaving this new idea of moving away from an official town meeting but trying to retain that spirit of input and direct democracy. And I think they're just doing a great job, learning as they go, and coming up with some really good ideas. So the Select Board really, really appreciates that and understands the challenge that we're asking them to do. From the Select Board, we just want to say that this meeting is about listening. There will -- we will make zero decisions tonight, but we're hoping to hear different ideas. Putting together the budget for the town of Jericho, I have found to be a little stressful, a little challenging. You kind of want everything, and you also don't want to see people with sticker shock of the price tag. And so balancing all those things and all those, you know, concepts of where we need to go, concepts of what we need to take care of that's here is really challenging. And it takes us a lot of meetings to really get through and understand all the different things. So we really do value your input. Meetings like this, all our meetings are in the public, so feel free to attend and listen to us as we work through. But that's kind of my main point from the Select Board, is today's about listening. That's going to help us, excuse me, start building out our plan for the fall and what that's going to look like. Typically, what we do is we'll tackle a little piece of the budget at a time so that we're not, you know, in an eight-hour meeting trying to do the whole thing at once. Yeah, and I'm glad that people came. I don't know how many we've got online, but hopefully, hopefully a bunch. And anything else, Select Board, you'd like me to cover? Dave, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Okay, next, we would like to give you a sense of the available town offices, right? And SJ Doobie's going to join us and give us that lowdown.
Hello? I'm good? Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm SJ Doobie. I'm on the task force. And these are the offices that are going to be on the ballot in March. And so I wanted to give you all a heads up in case you're thinking about getting involved in town government. You can, of course, volunteer for a lot of our different committees, commissions, task force, town meeting reimagined task force, would love some new members, affordable housing committee would love some new members. But, oops, the offices that are available and that will be on the ballot is moderator for one year, town clerk for one year. We've got three Select Board positions open. One is for one year of a two-year term. Another Select Board position is for two years, and then another one for three years. We've got an opening for cemetery commissioner, which is a post for three years. Jericho Underhill Library District Trustee has two spots open. And the Mansfield Unified Union School District Board of Directors. In order to run -- yeah, go ahead, Jessica.
Just to clarify, one is the Jericho Underhill Library District, and the other is the Jericho Underhill Park District.
Ah, sorry.
And Mount Mansfield, I still need to confirm. I should do a one spot there.
Okay, so if you heard that, so there's -- and it says that, I just didn't say it correctly. Jericho Underhill Library District Trustee is for four years. Then there's Jericho Underhill Park District Trustee, which is for three years. And the Mount Unified Union School District Board of Directors opening, we still need to confirm. But think about if you might want to run. What that means is you need to complete a consent form, and you need to have a nominating petition with 30 signatures. Those signatures should be from folks in Jericho who are registered to vote. And those signatures need to be in pen and ink, old-school way, no electronic signatures. There's a town clerk table right over here where Jessica has those forms for you if you want to pick them up and take them with you today. If you know you want to run, pick one up, fill it out, and start collecting signatures. We've definitely got more than 30 people here, so we encourage you to do that. Both of those forms need to be completed and returned to the town clerk by Monday, January 26 at 5:00 p.m. Did I miss anything, Jessica? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, SJ. This is great. Am I -- I'm back on, good. Okay, so now we want to get to the part in which we actually give you a little sense of something that's complex but is an important part of the process that we want to now develop. So I'll ask Gaye to join us up front and take the microphone and talk about public questions.
Okay. Is that -- is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so you can see behind me the information about if you have a public question, how would, you know, some of the requirements. My suggestion is, I mean, it's great if you can ingest this really quickly and remember it, but the person to go to is Jessica. Jessica is, you know, the core of the town, and she knows all these processes. So if you're not sure, pick up the phone or show up at town meeting, a town hall, and she will help you. I would say that this -- last year, we really didn't anticipate or weren't -- when we met at this time, which was October 5 for this meeting, we didn't realize that this is really the meeting to talk about public questions. At the January meeting, the town meeting reimagined, the timing of that is such that the deadline for filing petitions has already passed. And it's a three-hour meeting to talk about the budget, and Jericho's just getting used to the idea of doing that, of having a whole budget conversation in an evening. So imagine fitting into that a debate about a public question. It would have been hard. So the process is, you know, there's -- you can get tangled up, and many of us do, in just how many signatures do you need for what kind of public question? I have a summary that, if anybody's interested, I'm happy to give you. But the point is that the Select Board can put a public question in front of the town. They typically -- those are things like, shall the community center in Jericho be forgiven its property taxes for a period of five years? Or the -- you may remember, we had a debate about the Jericho Historical Society a few years ago, and we modified that on the floor to one year, and then the next year gave the full five-year property tax. I'm not using the right noun, but alleviation or forgiveness or whatever. That kind of thing can come right from the Select Board. If you have an idea that you think you'd like to put in front of people, you can collect some signatures, and you need, if you have 5% of the town and the numbers are right there, that's 215 people, on your petition, the Select Board's required to give that some thought and consider putting that in front of the voters. The Select Board in Jericho, a number of years ago, prior to, I think, the tenure of anyone who's currently on the Select Board, maybe Catherine was there, agreed or set up a policy that if 10% of the voters say, we want to put this in front of people, they will automatically do that, that they won't turn that request down. And then the other time that signatures comes is if what you're petitioning has anything to do with the town charter, as in, for example, changing the number of Select Board members from three to five, then you need 15% to be signed on your petition. And that's all, really, I'm going to say about the process. I think the thing I would emphasize is, you know, sometimes there, I believe, and I'm not sure, but there may be somebody here who's involved in a petition that has been circulating. I don't have a copy of it, but there is one that is circulating that I've seen in passing. And I've seen conversations about it on Front Porch Forum. And there might be an opportunity to, before you collect the signatures, actually work with people, maybe host a meeting. We don't have to resolve it right here and now today. But if it surfaces that there is a petition circulating and the wording is challenging because it touches on something that's, you know, emotional, that has cultural resonance, then perhaps who is ever hosting that petition might want to host a conversation and invite people to talk about it and see if it can be worded in a way that -- where it isn't as offensive or might not be as interpreted as being offensive. So that's something that might surface in the conversation today. We might not resolve it today, but between now and when the petition actually takes shape, there might be some work on what the language of the petition could be, is all I'm trying to say. For both the budget and public questions, there's a whole process between now and the January meeting. The Select Board will be hosting various, you know, meetings to work through the budget. But there isn't a comparable -- the only way to have something comparable around public questions is for those who are moving the public question to actually initiate that kind of thing themselves. And I would say, the last thing I would say is that prior to the Australian ballot vote, which will happen on the first Tuesday of March, the Select Board hosts an information meeting. State law requires them to. People could come to that information meeting and ask about public questions that the Select Board had nothing to do with putting together. So if you're hosting, if you are initiating a public question, it would behoove you to come to that information meeting 10 days before town meeting or whenever it is that the Select Board hosts that meeting, so that you can answer questions that the Select Board might not be in a position to be able to answer. And that's, I think, all I had to say. The last thing I wanted to say is there are now five Select Board members. Could you all put your hands up? And I would just like to say they have a ton of work on their plates, and for them to show up on a Saturday morning for a couple of hours and listen is really great. Thank you.
All right, people. So now we have -- such as the one that Gaye has just been talking about, which is developing ideas, sharing petitions that are underway, and similar sorts of things. This is for the whole group. Bear in mind that the real focus of the meeting is the small group sessions. But we thought we'd take a little time to energize this idea of getting conversations on the floor about major issues, major energy headed in the direction of developing a petition so that we could start there. And I know we've got one I'd love to just get us going. Bob, do you want to come on up and -- we don't actually know how this fits into this framework. So the first question is, okay, how are the citizens going to, like, work with this? And we'll just wing it here.
Would you mind using the mic for the people online?
I'm sorry. The motor's still propelling. It's really good. There we go. Good morning. I guess you can all hear me.
People online.
Yeah, better now, whatever. Okay.
And you're?
I just have a brief idea for discussion later.
Remember to say who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Robert or Bob DeVos. I live on Milo White Road.
Andrew.
I'm sorry. My name is Robert or Bob DeVos. Can you hear me? Better now, thank you. I live on Milo White Road. I just want to read something briefly, and if I could, I'd like to just give a copy to each focus group. It's something you can look at, you can agree, disagree, whatever you want to do. But I think it's an important topic that should be brought up. You can still hear fine, I hope. So just briefly, one page only, nothing about speed bumps or anything here at the moment here, so not going to go there. So here we go. My name is Robert Bob DeVos, and I live on Milo White Road. I am a member of the Jericho Heights Water Co-op that serves 16 homes on Ayers Drive and Milo White Road. I wanted noted that I am a member of the Water Co-op, but I am not a board member of the co-op. Our Jericho Heights Water Co-op faces past and new mandates from the state of Vermont that could potentially exceed what some of us homeowners now pay in property and educational taxes. In brief, along with other mandates, our aging water holding tank and other elements need inspection and, worst case, replacement. Because part of the water holding tank is underground, this presents several costly engineering challenges. This also means water must be held in a temporary tank to provide water to our homes. There's much more, but I digress at this point on that. The bottom line is the state assistance does not appear to be available. This is unlike the low-interest state loan we received and paid back earlier, ahead of schedule, when a new well had to be installed. So in brief, here's today's question. Since the town of Jericho may be asking for potentially millions of dollars to support a septic system for a new small section of Jericho, those that benefit, I believe, are in the Riverside area, and since Jericho has no water or septic infrastructure, my draft question is, under extreme circumstances and under strict guidelines and supervision, would the town of Jericho consider adding to the town budget a set amount of money, basically to increase our town rainy day fund, a provision under an emergency neighborhood fund to help with the possibility, both grants and 0% or 1% interest loans or something comparable, to individual homes and water entities that may face extreme financial hardship with the water infrastructure they now have and then be fully functional and under full regulatory compliance? So I just, I hope this may be able to be discussed, and I thank you for the time. Thank you, David. Thank you. Thanks, Toby.
Okay. So I, just to make a summary out of this, this is a perfect example of a new idea that has been formed in its infancy and is ready for the citizens to sort of absorb and think about, and think about in the context of the needs of the whole town. And I think it's a great example of the kind of thing that we want to get talking about at this stage in the process. So any -- yeah, go ahead, Jim.
My name's Jim Carroll. Oh, can you hear me? My first town meeting in Jericho was in 1967, and I've been coming as a resident for 47 years. So I want to tell you all, I'm old, and today is my 77th birthday. I have a sense of urgency and a great deal of concern with almost eight decades of life and almost six and a half decades of doing diversified things. So I've got some ideas for you. But as Bob brought up, there are silos of needs around town. There are techniques that can address the type of issues that he's raised. One of those, when we were working at Water Tower Hill at exit 16, was a tax incremental financing. Instead of burdening the current taxpayers with the cost of infrastructure or capital projects, there's a mechanism called a tax incremental financing. So if I want to do something in Jericho Center that involves a lot of money, the town's got the ability to borrow at one-half the cost that I would have to borrow. It can amortize it over 30 years. So in the high inflationary period, it costs to do that project a fraction of what it would cost if any of us tried to do it ourselves, as Bob has pointed out. So the reality is, I also have a degree in finance and marketing. So, and our lovely chair of the Select Board pointed out, what have I not done? Well, as you approach 80 years of age, you've done a lot. And I've also seen a lot of mistakes. So one of the things I'd like you folks to talk about is, we worked really hard to get a five-member Select Board because overlay of law had interfered with the basic function of our Select Board. One Select Board member could not talk to another Select Board member because of the Freedom of Information Act, said that's a public meeting, had to be warned, had to have minutes, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the reasons why a good number of us went out and selected 15% of the voters to be able to get it on the ballot, and then we didn't really have a big turnout, but nine out of 10 people voting voted for the five-member Select Board. So now we have five members. But what we do not have is a town executive, a town manager. We do not have the statutory authority to be able to delegate to an executive the day-to-day operations of our business. And one of my political science professors many years ago said, "A donkey is a racehorse designed by a committee." So if we have an executive, that does not cost more money, that saves money so that you can do capital projects that are amortized over their useful life. It's a lot easier to pay 30 years in order to do something right. So I've watched Jericho make really bad capital decisions because, oh my God, I can't stand to pay any more property taxes today. But in a high inflationary environment, when you can borrow money at 3.6%, which is what the town can borrow it, well, I'm paying 10.15 for it. That's two and a half times what it costs to borrow money to the town. So I'd like you to put into your sessions, we need a town manager, a day-to-day executive that supervises the employees. I sat there the other night and watched us buy a truck in pieces because the presumption is, without any data at the meeting, that our trucks are wearing out. you can do capital projects that are amortized over their useful life. It's a lot easier to pay 30 years in order to do something right. So I've watched Jericho make really bad capital decisions because, oh my God, I can't stand to pay any more property taxes today. But in a high inflationary environment, when you can borrow money at 3.6%, which is what the town can borrow it, well, I'm paying 10.15 for it. That's two and a half times what it costs to borrow money to the town. So I'd like you to put into your sessions, we need a town manager, a day-to-day executive that supervises the employees. I sat there the other night and watched us buy a truck in pieces because the presumption is, without any data at the meeting, that our trucks are wearing out. But it's not. Should we own our trucks? Should we lease our trucks? Going back to my education, partitioning taxes and finance, maintenance, there's things that we should be looking at. And a town manager can look at a capital budget. They can look at supervision. They can look at retention of employees. We can't hire. We've been trying to hire somebody. Should we be subcontracting? These are big executive decisions that we deal with in the private sector every single day. But in Jericho, we have a five-member select board, but we do not have a town executive. So with remote work, we now have tons of people living and working in Jericho that used to commute. So we need different services. Interest rates, God knows what's going to happen, but they doubled. So if we wanted to do something that we financed four years ago, the cost to do that today is double. Never mind inflation. So I think we've got out-of-control health insurance costs. Well, guess what? Huge part of our salaries and our budget are payroll taxes and health insurance costs. Labor is not cheap. So, and housing. Jericho is disadvantaged and has been disadvantaged for the whole length of time that I've been involved. We are a lily-white segregated town that's socio-economically at the upper tier. So therefore, the algorithm for charging the educational cost to Jericho is extremely high. That's why you saw about a 12 or 13% increase in your property taxes, and that included a subsidy from the state of Vermont to keep our taxes down. I don't even want to tell you what my tax bills are.
Jim, may I? I need to interrupt. I'm sorry. Can you hear me? This is a time for input, and what you've shared, I value and I thank you. What I heard you say is I'd like to ask this subject of the town administrator to be a part of the discussion in the small groups.
Manager, not administrator.
Town manager.
Town manager.
Statutory requirement.
Right.
We have to change the statute.
So I...
We have to go to the legislature to get the authority to have a town manager. It's an organizational issue, just like the five-member select board.
So what I'm saying, Jim, is I think in view of possibly being other people who want to speak to the general group, that I think we've got the basic gist of your point, and what I'm hearing now are examples of the power of that decision to make things work better. So with all, if you'll forgive me, I'd like to move on.
I'd like to move on, too. Committees. We do not have a public works committee, and yet we've got a very large public works expense. We do not have a finance committee.
All right, one minute.
So the citizens do not have the opportunity to input on those items, and we spend a lot of money. I had lawyers talk to me this week about $348 an hour in charges. I have friends with those skills in the town of Jericho that would donate their time, and frankly, I'd trust them a lot more than what I would pay to a large multi-state CPA or law firm. We need to get involved. We need to allow the function of democracy in Jericho. I think we've gone backwards since 1967. I see it as though we have an opportunity to take a different turn. Thank you for your time. I finished early.[845.79][845.79](APPLAUSE).
Okay. Thank you, Jim. All right, anybody else?
I wish there were a light on this thing. You can hear me now? Yeah. Ian Beck.
Can everybody hear me? Yeah. Hi, my name is Catherine Bass, and I work at Jericho Town Library. It's a really exciting year for Jericho Town Library because our historic building turned 200 years old this year. The building itself is on the National Register of Historic Places, and the reason that I'm here to talk to you today is that we've been working really hard on a project to make the building accessible to all Vermonter's. Right now, you have to get up steps to actually enter the building. But during the process of working on this accessibility project, we had visits from several structural engineers, and we found that we need to make really critical structural repairs to this historic building, probably about $317,000. We need to do work on the foundation, the attic, the cupola, the front porch, and we are asking that the select board consider partnering with us financially over the next four years. So we are so happy to continue working on fundraising, but we need help in order to make sure that the building continues to stay safe and sound for everybody. So our proposal that we would like to talk about over the course of these meetings the next year is perhaps we could have $200,000 over four years to try to make that work financially with the town's budget, but also ensure that we're able to keep our building open for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, I'm thinking about the small group sessions. There's time for one more contribution if there was somebody else. Otherwise, we will move on to the small groups.
Can I just clarify? The small group doesn't have to be limited to talking about only these ideas.
Oh, gosh, no. The small groups is no rules.[975.49][975.49](LAUGHTER). Hey, I'm not running one.
Are the small groups also going to talk about how the meeting is run and whether the people that come to the last meeting can add things to the budget and vote on them, and then they pass without a majority? It's not any different than town meeting day?
We didn't envision that being a topic for today. We, the, I guess I would invite other members of the group to chime in, but what we learned last year was, there was, I think we had a couple of examples of modifications that were made to the draft budget. The final budget is vote, is the Australian ballot vote on town meeting day. The purpose of the January meeting is for citizens to be able to, as opposed to here, but to, as a whole, agree on modifications to what the select board has proposed as the draft budget. And we saw, I'll just use two examples of, one was, we should pay the select board more, and that, I think, had an impact of $5,000 or so on the budget, and it was unanimous. And then the other vote was to study traffic calming and to allocate $30,000 to traffic calming. And there was a lot of back and forth, and that vote passed by one vote. And that was our first vote managing online and in-person voting. So it taught us two things. One is, that had a $30,000, a bigger impact. We need to be more clear, and we have incorporated some changes, you'll see, in the January budget. We have incorporated changes to that meeting so that we have a better sense of the count. But also, we have said back to the select board, what you could do in that case, if there was a large impact item that was controversial and only passed by a little bit, the select board could opt to put that in front of the voters in March, at the March meeting, as a separate ballot item. So there'd be a ballot item saying, shall the voters pass a budget of whatever the total comes to? And then there could be a separate article, in addition, shall the voters pass an additional $30,000 for a playground or whatever? And I think the select board is considering, is likely to, you know, do that kind of thing. And I think that we opted not to say, we think the select board should have a hard and fast rule, that, or, because we don't want to just break the budget into about five different articles. But I think there's, because you want to still have that meeting hold weight. This is where the citizens are expressing ourselves as a whole in creating a draft budget based on what the select board's recommending. But if something stands out as having been big and controversial, then let's, then it probably makes sense to isolate it as a separate article. So that's how we're kind of approaching that from what we learned last year.
Okay, I'm going to say we're moving on to small group time.
You're ready?
I am. Am I anymore? Okay. S.J. is the master of ceremonies for the small groups, so I'll invite her to come on up.
Okay, neighbors. So this is what we're really here to do, which is get together in community, have some discussion about the kinds of things that we want to prioritize, communicate to the select board about what we want to see in the coming year. And also, if you've got some public questions that you want to kind of flesh out, we can have time for that, too. We've got a bunch of small group facilitators that have some prompts for you, some resources for you to look at and to help kind of guide the discussion. Those facilitators will also be taking notes and recording your suggestions, which will all get compiled and then given back to select board members. So anything that you say, rest assured, we are writing down and communicating back to select board. So, my small group facilitators, if you want to stand up, yeah?
So the process, as I understand it, that input will be given to the select board in the...[1299.42][1299.42](BEEP).
So the, we're not... If you have a public question, which is like a yes/no question about town business that you want to collect signatures for, you can do that on your own, doesn't require the select board to make any kind of movement on that. So you collect your signatures, and it gets put on the ballot, depending on the number of signatures, we can go through all of that. What we're, what this is for, in terms of communicating to the select board, is anything you want them to know or to take into consideration as they launch into the budget process for this year. So things that you've, projects that you've seen around town that should be prioritized or you think that money needs to be set aside for this, that, or the other thing. No decisions are going to be made today. This is information, this is an opportunity for your voice to get recorded and funneled directly to the select board as they launch their month-long process of putting together the budget and the vision for town priorities for next year. Does that make sense?
But I think you...
Yeah?
I think what you may be asking is, if I want a playground, I'm going to choose playground instead of speed issues because I think we've had enough of that. I don't mean to, seems a little safer. You know, if you, if there's a strong interest in having a playground on town property, then, and we talk about that here, and then, and the select board hears that, and then, I think what you're asking is, if they go through the process of putting together a draft budget and they say, you know, this isn't the year for a playground, then you would like to know that so you could initiate a petition, is what I'm hearing you ask?
That's what I was curious, because it sounds like the next step is the select board to make the budget. When will that draft budget be created so that you can know whether...
The draft budget would be available in early January, and that's the purpose of the January 20th meeting, is we come together. The only thing is, that's too late to do a petition. So if you want to force a vote on it, then you would need to just be in communication with one of the select board members and say, this really matters to me, and could you let me know if it's going to come up in a select board meeting, because I'd like to be there to be, I think that happens, and then ask them to let you know if they make a decision.
Maybe Eric should answer that question, not me.
I think I might get your question. If I'm a citizen and I want a playground, I want to know if the select board's going to do it on their own, and then all I have to do is be like, hey, I'd like a playground, and then sit back and let the select board run with it. If the select board's going to say, no, we don't want a playground, then I have to go get those signatures. And I think she's asking when, how, and I don't, that's a great question. Nothing will be decided today, as I promised earlier, but I think, I think maybe a good step will be, let's gather all of the, you know, over the, today and over the next couple of weeks, we gather all of the proposed, currently proposed questions, and I think it's on the select board to get those in a meeting and talk about it in an open, warned meeting and decide, no, we're going to say, the select board is not on board with a new playground, so you need to go get 5%, 10%, 15%, depending on what your motion is. I think that's, is that what you're asking? Okay. Is that okay, select board? Okay.
It's mine now. No. And I think the one thing that we were going to talk about at the end, but we can talk about now, is continued communication throughout the budget process. This isn't your only chance. And so every select board meeting has a public agenda where they spell out what they're going to be talking about, and as they move through the budget process, each agenda will cover which area of the budget they're talking about at that meeting. That would be an opportunity to say, oh, they're talking about the parks and rec budget in October. I'm going to make sure that I either communicate to my select board member or Paula Carrier, who's the town administrator, prior to that meeting to make sure that my input is registered and part of the discussion, or I'm going to attend that meeting and speak up in person. But I also, like, if you've got a playground that you're really jonesing for, I would start talking to neighbors, informing, you know, you can always collect signatures and then not turn it in, if it was something like that. But anyway, okay, I want to get us going. So my small group facilitators, if you want to stand up, and basically, I'd say between, I don't know, five and eight, five and 10 neighbors per group. We've got Sabina, Heidi, Tom, Kathy, Sam, and myself. We're each going to kind of spread out so that we can hear each other. Find your facilitator of choice and go and start discussing.
There are five groups. We're going to go group by group, and the leader's going to report in. And my first victim is right here in front of me, Sam. And we need your full attention.
All right. Since I have the mic, I'm happy to start. So I'm just going to quickly run through a brief summary of what we talked about, again, emphasizing that this, all this information's going to go to the select board. So the first thing we talked about was the town administrator versus town manager, and had some good talk about that, thinking about some of the next steps of how to do that. We also talked about the summer rec program, as well as just general rec programs in town, and how there's a desire to have more of a rec presence, especially for adults and in, beyond just in the summer. We then talked about some things from the Conservation Commission perspective, thinking about Emerald Ash Bore and how there's some need for more funds to possibly supplement the tree wardens budget to manage the trees that are affected by Emerald Ash Bore along Wright's Way, because the longer we wait, the more expensive they get to manage. There's also a proposal about having some highlights of different trees in town and having people kind of taking pride in the different beautiful trees that we have in town. The idea of a library of things that the town could maybe maintain or work with some other group that could help maintain them.
The library.
The one specific thing, which I don't know if that includes, is some accessibility things, really helping people get into, like ramps to get into homes and things. So that's one thing which might be, so that's one thing that came up to add to the library of things that already exist in the town. And some other things came up around that. And some other things came up around that, around liability and how they would be stored and things. The idea of a town map, both potentially a paper map, but was brought up initially, was having a big in-person map to show recreation, business opportunities in town that'd be good for both people visiting and new people to town, to have a central place where there's a map. It's also just sort of a way to build community and show what we have on offer. And then lastly, thinking about the zoning shifts in the center, but specifically around Route 15, about requiring buildings to be built close to the town or to the road, now that might not be the best way to encourage the type of development that we were looking for in town. We didn't get too deep into that one, so forgive me if I got that one wrong, but that's it.
Thank you.
And what group would like to go next? Group facilitators.
Hi. I'm Heidi, and I had the pleasure of a great table, and I forced them to talk about things that cost money. So we didn't get quite as wide-ranging. So, it was a great group. We started with infrastructure and looking for an opportunity to have loans and/or grants through a pot of money that the town sets aside for existing neighbors that would be available once state funding and state creativity has been exhausted, so that we would be a backup as a community to our neighbors, really building on the idea that Bob had identified earlier. Looking to specifically have $50,000 per year for the next four years to ensure the structural safety and integrity of our town library. There will be efforts to do some private fundraising, but really asking for a commitment from the town of $50,000 per year for four years for structural integrity. The recreation idea came up, too. Lots of interest in having recreational safety programs with a long-term vision of a swimming pool. This has come up in lots of places. The idea would be to see if we might be able to partner with Richmond, Underhill, and Jericho, maybe with the school district, to invest in swimming infrastructure for the town, both for recreational as well as social reasons. Ideally, that would be an indoor facility. Just to be clear.
But St. Albans, if they have one that has a retract...
Right. And there was a mention of what St. Albans has done, but recognize that might be on steroids for our small town, and so we might want to have a smaller idea, less costly. Yeah, so, okay, we're going to dream big, says Sabrina. Let's dream towards what they did in St. Albans. We also had a lot of conversation around walkability and safety infrastructure, and recognize that many of us are unaware of the plans that are currently underway in the town for the build-out of safety infrastructure on our roads. We were lucky to have Catherine at our table and was able to, like, state, "Well, in the next five years, here's where we're going. We already have a plan with the state." So the first idea was to please publish and make clear what the infrastructure investments are moving forward, what we already know is planned, so that we know what is already undergoing, so we can identify the areas that are not planned, so that we can prioritize them. And then the second idea was recognizing that we really don't have as much control over the state routes, which is Route 15, which is the one that is most problematic. On our other streets, there may be lots of low-cost investments we could do. We know that the town has had lots of conversations, as we know, on Raceway and others, about slowing traffic, but there are ways to do that that include landscaping, decoration, things that make it look like the roads are smaller, that will slow things down, that do not require us to invest in sidewalks, which are both expensive and controversial. Those were our primary ideas. Did I miss anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, who's up?
We're going to go online. Hello?
Can you guys hear me? Yep, okay. So we talked about a bunch of stuff. We had about, we had four of us online, so just for whatever the sizing comparison is there. So we talked about the Historical Society, really about awareness, about what the Historical Society is doing. Are there ways to make that more obvious, especially about the Red Barn or the Red Mill? And is there any, is there any way to get the word out on what's, like, the kinds of things that are happening at the Red Mill, and maybe give updates on the money that we've spent on the Red Mill over time? How do you make discussions like that happen? Can we, can we encourage more one-to-one things, maybe at the farmer's market, maybe the tabling stuff at the various meetings? That seems valuable. I think, generally speaking, people were happy to have smaller conversations like these breakout meetings, and like, are there ways to have discussions about other issues besides maybe just things that are on the town budget? We also had a conversation about loud motorcycles on Route 15. Is there something we can do about that? Is there a noise ordinance type of a thing? Is there, is there, is there anything we can do that doesn't necessarily provoke more noise in retribution? We also talked about the sidewalks in Riverside. They seem, seems like a positive change, but it's kind of a change to the traffic pattern for the vehicles. Is there a way to warn better that the crosswalks are coming? Maybe that's new for some people who are passing through, especially like during the busy times, when there might be kids walking across. Is there a way to warn that ahead of time, especially if you're used to kind of just burning through there? "We've got a bunch of crosswalks. When the light's around, you've got to slow down for those." And also, that's, since that's a state route, is there anything that the state can do on that? Seemed like, generally speaking, we like the mail-in ballot idea. Could we move to doing always mail-in ballots for that, or like, you know, issuing the ballots for each, for each election, so that you don't have to sign up for absentee? That can be challenging. And then, the, there was sort of some, some small talk about, when we go to vote, a lot of times you don't know who these people are that are on these ballots, and wouldn't it be great if we could get like little bios, or maybe even just answer some questions, like, "Why are you running? What's interesting to you about the town government?" et cetera. Because otherwise, maybe you feel, you feel a little bit uninformed after you walk in and to vote, or maybe you sit there and you look at it, and you're like, "What's the point? I don't even know what I'm voting for." Maybe there's only one person, and you're voting for that, and you don't feel confident. So any, anything we can do to make that, make a little bit more information, maybe, maybe something on the website, something more on Front Porch Forum, but a little bit more even across all the candidates. And then finally, we talked about the town manager versus town admin. I think that the, the big, the big point we hit on that was, there is definitely a difference between a town admin and a town manager. A town manager is probably the Select Board seating control to a specific person, whereas the town admin is there to do work on behalf of the Select Board. And I think we wanted to talk more about, like, why would you choose one over the other? It seemed like maybe Heinsberg switched to a town manager, and the Select Board didn't totally understand that they had seated some power. And we just went, I think there was like a caution, a cautionary tale there, like, "Let's make sure we're clear on what that means if we wanted to make that sort of a change." And that's everything we had.
Terrific. Thank you so much. All right.
Well, hello, everyone. I can be brief, because many of the points that our group raised have been laid out already, but the value, I think the value of repeating them is the clear demonstration that these themes are resonating throughout Jericho. So with respect to items that are directly related to the Jericho budget, let me simply say that our group strongly endorses the port, the idea of support for the Jericho Town Library as it undertakes the structural renovations that are required. And will simply say that we value both of the libraries that we have in town, that we think they have very different characters and serve different functions. The idea of that beautiful historic gem right in the center of the green that provides a sort, a central gathering place for the town means a lot to us, and we'd like to see it supported. The second point is, we have heard over and over again from neighbors, from people involved in town boards and commissions, that we want Jericho to be a more walkable and bikeable community, and our group strongly endorses those goals. Some of us live in places where you can't get from anywhere to anywhere, except for maybe a beautiful woodland ramble, on foot, and wouldn't it be nice if we could safely move about our town on foot or on a bike? And then, the third idea is, we were favorably impressed by Mr. DeVos' suggestion that in cases where local water and perhaps sewage districts or commute, not formal districts, but groups of adjacent neighbors, neighborhoods, are trying to respond to regulations that require great outlays of resources, if perhaps the town might, where appropriate, play a supporting role. Was that clear enough? Okay, great, thanks. And then, related to the general vision for the town, this was question two, not directly and immediately budget-related, but sort of community, the community reimagining itself as we move forward. One is that we strongly endorse the goal of affordability in Jericho, but we also want the town to keep in mind its beautiful historical character. And an example of what we don't want to see a lot of is bright yellow Dollar General Store signs and that sort of thing. So, let's find the balance, making the community more accessible to a broader array of people, especially young people, young families, but let's, let it not, I'm throwing this in, this is a C. Paris remark, "Let us not become another Taft Corner as we move towards the goal of affordability." And then, lastly, and very briefly, we endorse the idea that Mr. Carroll proposed, that a town manager might serve the community well, and we didn't so much see the town manager role as one that would supersede the Select Board, but rather would provide efficiency and sort of efficient decision-making, and would work in concert with the Select Board in that respect. Did I get that right? Okay, so that's the report from our group. I really appreciated the thoughtful conversations and focused idea generating.
Well done, thanks. Sabina's up?
So, our group also talked about walkability and making the streets safe for children, especially as they travel to school. So that's, again, a recurring theme that was also echoed in our group. We talked a little bit about speeds on, specifically on dirt roads, and whether there has to be separate conversations about that. We also talked about the library, so since that's been mentioned a few times, I won't go into the details, but our group also talked about that. So again, more support for that concept of supporting the library financially for their structural needs. And we also, as a part of that conversation, delved a little bit into the capital improvement plan, and one thing that we did talk about is that there is a committee that is now working on a capital improvement plan, so that's actually underway. So, in case you didn't know that, that's, that's part of our town plan, getting it done chapter, and that's something that we're working on. And then the last thing that came up that is something that you haven't heard already is just an idea about creating sort of a task force, a network of neighbors, some way for our community to have a place that they know they can reach out to in a time of need, whether it would, whether you have a fire in your home, or a major flood comes through your neighborhood, or some kind of natural disaster or larger disaster, that some, some group in town that you know you can reach out to and get assistance. So, where can I sleep tonight? How can I cook my dinner for the next week? Who's going to, you know, how can I help myself in this immediate time of crisis? So, not, not the first responders, not FEMA, you know, six months down the road, but like, today, what can I do and who do I reach out to? So we talked about possibly, you know, ways that we could possibly enact that within the town. So, those were the three big themes, and I know we're getting close to time.
So, again, I like how, maybe it's not surprising, but I love how we break up into these small groups, and some of these themes just arise, and that's one of the things that's really valuable about doing this, and I think for this Select Board to kind of see, like, oh, and all these different groups, these same, same ideas came up. A rec committee came up in our group, too, but really what we were talking about was not necessarily limited only to recreation, but was really focused around building community, community events, and also communication between all of our small groups. So we had a lot of examples about the party that was last weekend, or the pizza that happens at JES, and how can we really foster more communication, more overlap between some of these small things, so that neighbors get to see neighbors face-to-face, so that there's more, again, more sense of community, respectful communication, and also learning about all of the things that are going on in town. So, the things that, you know, my handful of groups are really focused on, I may know nothing about what's going on a couple doors down, that also impacts me. And so, what are some ways that we can really encourage building community around either community events or improving communication? I think we talked a little bit about the town manager thing, but what we really ended up talking more about was efficiency and capacity. One of the things that I want to make sure gets communicated is that no one in our group had any personal experiences of a time when they felt Town Hall wasn't responding to their need, or their request, or their committee's request. They, there was an overwhelming appreciation for the work that our staff and our committees and our elected officials are doing, and also a trust that the people in those positions know best whether there is a need for more support, more staffing, more capacity, whatever that is, and that there's, because there's that trust and there's that respect, the people in my group felt that they would support whatever those folks were asking for and identifying as a need. There was a mention of the Rivers property or the land that's currently owned by the Fire Department, and the value that that property has and could have for the town, and a question about where that stands, what its future might be. And, and then, we also discussed infrastructure, and I think that we came to a similar place that some of the other groups have had, which is some, some kind of backstop or support or expertise that some of these smaller neighborhoods or even individuals can lean on or apply for funding for, to support when the well goes dry, or when, you know, you all know. And so whether that's a pot of money that keeps getting added to, or whether that's, you know, resources, I don't know, but there's at least a recognition in our group that there is a need there, and that the town has the potential to, to provide some support and resources, whatever that looks like. And I think that's it for us.
Okay. I've lost track. Is there another group still?
I think that's it.
All set. Good people. We're at the end of our day. I first want to thank you all for coming and investing in the town and getting us moving again on this year's town meeting reimagined process. This is great. We'll be summarizing this set of thoughts and sharing them with the Select Board and also with the community.
Check, check. Can you hear me on Galike? I'm Peter Booth, I'm on the select board, and I'm writing down these things, and some of them, like, oh, my God, yes, we should be doing that. And my immediate thought is, okay, I don't have time to do that. So I'm wondering if the, what's going to come from the town meeting, Town Meeting Reimagine group to the select board is going to have names associated with it. For example, someone in our group had some ideas I want to, that I'm really interested in, like, concrete ideas about walkability, and I said to her, hey, can I get your name and number? I want to follow up with this. And if, for example, the, the rec committee idea, and the kind of general getting together and getting out in the community, yes, I'm 1,000% in support of that. I don't have bandwidth to make that happen, but if I knew that, oh, that was Sam and Catherine who are interested in that, I can talk with them about, hey, let's figure out how to make this happen. So is that, will there be names associated with the ideas that came out of groups?
Where possible, yeah, I would think.
Yep.
Okay, and if you feel like the person in your group didn't catch your name, maybe go to them and give them your name around whatever topic. That'd be helpful. Thanks.
Thanks. So going forward, I'll just remind you that the select board meets regularly, and the meetings are warned, and they, I believe the warnings regularly refer to particular aspects of the budgets that will be part of the meeting. Am I correct with that?
First and third Thursdays.
First and third Thursdays? So you have regular access, and share this with neighbors, some or another. We're not getting the kind of participation in those meetings we want, so the more that folks here can do to, to sell the idea of visiting those meetings, if they have a point to make, that'd be great. And then the last thing I wanted to say that's on my list is that the Town Meeting Reimagined Task Force is a group of passionate wackos who do this. This is year two, folks, and we're still doing it, but we need company. So if any of you are looking for a role in such things as figuring out how to run this meeting, we would love to have your company. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm, I just want to point out, when you said we're looking for more participation, it's really easy to, well, I hope it's really easy. I hope that everyone feels invited, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, because you're all here. It's, most of these meetings have an online component, so the select board is fantastic at including comments from people who pop in on Zoom, and so if you're in the middle of getting your kids dinner or something like that, and you can't sit at the town hall for a few hours, you can pop in during public comment, which is usually first. So I'm on the Mobs Committee and the Trails Committee, and we would always invite people to pop in and have public comment. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but you can have your voices heard, or you can listen in in a muted way. We would all love more participation at any level. Thanks.
Any closing thoughts before we wrap up the meeting? Jessica? Oh, good.
I just wanted to share with the nominating petitions, a couple things that came up or thoughts that I thought of. When you're a voter signing a nominating petition, be sure to sign your name, however your signature is, but when you're writing, printing out your name, print it as it shows on the checklist, like, don't use your nickname Skip, because we, we want to be sure when we're counting the signatures that that person is on the voter checklist. And it's more than five years ago, it passed that, it used to be you could only sign as many nominating petitions as there were positions that were open, so like, if it was a, you know, just one position open, that you could only sign one nominating petition, and then future nominating petitions that came into the town office, we couldn't count your signature on a, another nominating petition for the same office, but that is no longer the law, so you can actually sign as many nominating petitions as you want as a voter. There's no restriction to that. But one interesting thing, particularly this year, if you're running for select board, there are three different term lengths, and when you start the nominating petition, you have to put on the petition which term you're running for. So you have an option of just picking a random term, or if you're not sure right now, you could actually start three petitions, one for the one-year term, one for the two-year term, and one for the three-year term, and then, after talking with people and deciding, you know, what kind of commitment you want to do, you could just turn in one petition, and then on the consent form, you would write the term length on the consent form for the one you're actually going to run for. So I think that's all I thought of. Did you have?
I just wondered when the next meeting was going to be, this meeting.
You mean the town meeting, reimagined meeting?
No, this meeting, like, this type of meeting that we're having tonight, today.
Exactly like this, is a year from now, but the next meeting is the, the town meeting. That's the draft budget review meeting, which comes January 20th, right? And there will be, among other things, a new postcard in your mailbox. Okay, I look forward to it.
Thank you.
The postcard's really helpful.
Is that, so it is a good idea, postcard? Yeah. What about timing? Was it too late?
Earlier.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, sorry. Personal responsibility, guilty. Slow to get it out. All right, are we done?
We're done.
Thank you. (applause) We've got plenty of food, please take some.